Before we start, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't ask if you wanted to do a review of the minutes from the special meeting on January 12. I will say this, I found numerous typos and questionable typos. Some of them were quotes of me, and I may actually talk that disjointed, I'm not sure. So they may be accurate or actually incorrect. If the board would like to, go ahead and approve those minutes, it's okay with me. Otherwise, I would be happy to send corrections to the secretary and approve them at the next meeting.
Same, I need to approve the minutes too.
Okay.
She's okay.
Okay. And I'm not hearing anybody jumping all over, hey, we need your approval tonight. So can I have a motion to take that until next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table. Approval of the minutes to respect.
And a second? Got a motion in a second, it's not too controversial, I'll take your say. Folks? Jerry, I'm moving right along.
Yeah, we also have Jerry on too, Jerry's joined us.
Hi Jerry, welcome.
Good evening.
That's quite a logo.
Yeah, I'm logged in. I'm logged in under my, I had to put a whole thing together for my union to do Zoom, and I don't know, I'm on the wrong account. So I'm gonna log out and log back in, okay?
I like it.
I'll keep an eye out for you, Jerry.
Alright, thanks, I'll be right back.
See you soon. Okay, we have our first item on the agenda this evening. Hoffman's Car Wash. Presented by Hoffman Development Corp. Do we have a Hoffman's Car Wash for this evening? Wolf School treatment. Awesome. Children's directors tonight. Yeah, but you brought your own gear, old stuff. We used to have a easel that wouldn't, nothing would stay up on it. It was fun just to watch engineers try to bigger.
Sitting there holding it.
Yeah, no, it actually was learning to grab a tape clip and clip it on, it was great. Okay, tell us the story.
Yeah, so we're here again, we have the Hoffman's Car Wash. The project we've already seen several times now. We were here last in December. Project itself just hit some brief highlights, 1.65 acres they have control of. That's the plan, is part of the Auto World subdivision of Route 44. Last year, several, including the former Suzuki dealership, it's making parcels to the back with a future access road connecting all those parcels, possibly connecting into the JCParsels to the south. Hoffman's have control of 1.5 acres. They're gonna utilize the anticipated curb cut on Route 9. We have the traffic plate opposite Reynolds Road. The access road coming in, looping around the site, stacking for 30 or so vehicles before they queue and go into the car wash, exiting out, back onto Route 9. Backings on site. Again, the car wash buildings, I think everybody in the room has seen how Hoffman's Car Wash operates. They really do top-notch maintenance on their site. Probably some of the most well-maintained properties in any of the areas that they go into. At the last meeting, there were some ongoing comments about the traffic. There was a delay in the response from the town engineer back and forth. I believe there's now been some back and forth. We, Alana Rand of DHB and Creighton Manning Engineering, because the town engineers doing this project. I think that was some of the more important information. So I will turn it over to Alana to bring us up speed on where we are with, as it relates to traffic.
Thank you. Good evening, Alana Rand of DHB. As Joe noted, we've been working with both New York State DOT and with Creighton Manning, the Town Review Agency regarding traffic for the proposed project. I think Jim probably just handed you the letter from Creighton Manning.
That's correct.
That had a couple of additional questions in response to. They had their comment letter, we had a response letter, and then Mark had a couple more questions. So I was on the phone with him today, just kind of talking through some of those questions. Would it be easiest to just kind of walk through the comments he has or the additional comments? So I think, so like on page one, new comment number three. Basically, he's talking about providing a sidewalk along the project wreckage, which has been added to the proposed site plan. And Joe, I believe on project rock, or maybe not on within the driveway?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's the first thing, I guess, is just making sure that there's a sidewalk along the project wreckage. That actually takes care of comment three and comment four. Then under the traffic study, he started some new comments. And that's comment number two. He's really talking about comparing traffic volumes or any adjustments to the traffic volumes based upon COVID conditions or non-COVID conditions. He's stating in here that there's no need for color adjustment, but we did increase the volume a little bit to account for potential changes with things like maybe getting decreased a little. So it's more of a, yeah, we agree that everything's okay, it's kind of good, so we read that. Let's see, his new comment number five is talking about trip generation at the site. So the way that we looked at trip generation for this proposed project was using data published in the Institute of Environmental Engineers Trip Generation Manual, the latest edition, which is the 11th edition, which came out in September. There's not a ton of data for car wash uses, there just isn't. So based upon that, we did trip generation based upon the number of car wash base. And in this case, it's just the one. But in order to respond to Mark's comments from the original letter that he put together, Hoffman's was able to provide some data that talked about what happens at a similar type facility. So we did an analysis with roughly, twenty roughly, with 198 trips. So 99 trips entering, 99 trips exiting during the PMP hour, which was consistent with the data that Hoffman provided for kind of a, like a peak operation during the weekday. Basically, that was showing that the levels of storage at the intersection are still fine. That queuing, coming out of the site, would still be less than one vehicle per approach. So, you know, it's basically showing that even on those peak operation days, that everything looks good. What Mark is asking for is more analysis that shows, analysis during the Saturday peak hour, because there's not, again, a lot of data. What we were looking at was the PMP hour. What I actually thought to him about today was that, you know, some peak-peak operation is going to happen up to maybe five times per year. So what are we, what was he actually trying to get at with regards to the trips? Like, why was that? And his concern was making sure that, on the site itself, that there's not going to be any queuing that would actually make it back to Route 9. So there's not any impact on Route 9 associated with the project. But the site itself has about, has enough space for like 37 vehicles to queue between the entrance to the car wash and where the exit is. With that much storage space, there is no reason to believe that people are going to then continue to back up out onto Route 9. Typically, if you're driving by and you see that much happening, you're just gonna go to a different car, or go to a different car wash. Let's see, and then the new comment number 12 is actually talking about this location right here and making sure that the driveway provides enough space for storage for heading out onto Route 9. There's enough big storage here for four vehicles in each of these lanes. The site is expected to have less than one vehicle as far as queuing concerns go. And then, in the future, should somebody else develop beyond that, there's space for eight vehicles to queue prior to potentially impacting the site driveway. But these vehicles will also, as soon as this turns green, these are gonna clear out and then anybody from the car wash can access the lane.
I'm gonna interrupt for just a moment. What is the cycle time on this? On, pardon me, guys? The cycle, the cycle time? How long does it take the car to go through the process?
About two minutes.
Okay. So if you have four cars stacked up there, as long as it doesn't take eight minutes, is that right to change?
Yeah.
No, Joe, when you said it, you've been to the car wash, if you have, you know, they're they're all going through at the same time, so they're coming through.
Yeah, that's true, right, I forgot about that, yeah. So about four cars or five cars, then the four cars is a problem. So in other words, one cycle, two minutes. You alert coming out, you're good, you're alert in a car. But you have two lines there, one left, one right, hopefully they split a little bit. Okay. Just trying to get a general idea and stuff. I'll leave the rest up to the traffic engineers.
How many cars can they get in here all the way around where they?
So from here, stacking lanes, getting to the car wash, not assuming cars, in the car wash, about seven minutes.
Okay, so you got plenty of room to get, get quite a few cars in there.
Correct.
Off the road.
And from this point, those vehicles, then be able to start stacking and heading out into the road. Probably about another seven or eight vehicles. So you're forty, forty before you start seeing problems. Again, I think it comes down to, you're going to a car wash and you see cars stacked, you're gonna go wash your cars somewhere else.
Right.
On that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then the final point here was talking about potential roadway driving. Should construction happen in the back? The corridor study, the exit 17, Route 9 corridor study, they talked about the provision of a set of right-turn lane at that location. Right now, there's very wide shoulders out there, so eight to 11 inch feet, which is room. But we're also talking about something that would need to be designed, of course, DOT scanners to the 45 mile hour design speed. And it's not really something that's imminent, so I believe there would be a little slight adjustment should another lane need to be added along the French. But it doesn't seem to be something that's happening in the short term.
What is DOT's route?
There's a front on this sidewalk, right? Can you put this right?
Yes.
The side way on in here. So it's just basically edge of that apron?
Well, I think about three feet off the shoulder, into the property line. As stated, there is a shoulder here that's as wide, if not wider, than the actual travel lanes themselves.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, like, we're doing a sidewalk on the property side, it also allows more space should something like that happen in the future, instead of putting in the DOT rightways.
DOT is a line.
Containing the sidewalk, that's better. But with the sidewalk on private property as opposed to it within the rightway, it easily is needed, just for public usage, that's pretty standard of the city. So that was also on the vote today with DOT Region 1, with Guy Tesco over there. And he basically said, things look good, we're good with trip generation, we're good with trip distribution, we're good with the findings. Preliminary, we're good with providing access through the, you know, the existing traffic signal. It just has to go through one more department of review, so I don't have a final letter at this point. But every indication is that access is good, and they'll continue to work with the applicant regarding whether that lecture link would need to be restripped going into the site.
So no demand for a tracker to go there?
No, no, no call for that to go in, I mean, a first circle, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I'm good, unless y'all have questions for me.
Yeah, I know, ultimately, we're, we're being in a very good position here. DOT's looked at this, generally, they agree with the trip type location, I mean, that goes along with that. They've been going into details in the stage two review. We, again, developed our site, developed storm comprehensive stormwater plans that have been viewed by the town engineers. We would be looking, if the board thinks it appropriate, to move the project forward, taking approvals of that. And again, continue with the outside agencies and get gearing up for construction spring into summer.
Anybody on the board have questions?
Do we have a public here?
Yes, tonight, yeah, so I'm properly noticed and published.
This is Ann, I have some questions regarding Creighton Manning's comments. I do think they, that they've raised a number of them that are of concern, that we should consider, and not just kind of skid by. One of them is that the layout should not preclude future improvements planned for Route 9. And I understand that, you know, they're not on VDOT or New York State's plan at the moment. But I'm wondering, how would the site be reconfigured? How would that layout change in order that these future improvements can be made? The other concern that was raised was the entry way onto the site. I'm wondering if you could just flip the east end to the west end, or just rotate this configuration and move the access road up without much difficulty. But again, I think maybe, first of all, addressing the layout question would be important. And I also note that Southland, Southland Falls Fire Department has not yet offered its review of this, of the, of the numbers, or of this site plan.
So considering the layout changes, we would not anticipate any changes to our closest edge of pavement, which would be our eastern edge of pavement. With improvements, they would have to do some substantial widening in order to get that close to our site. What I would see is that the sidewalk would need to be relocated further into the site, and then any stormwater area that occurred between the sidewalk and the front of the property, that would get shrunk, DOT would need to be able to accommodate that loss of stormwater within their plan as they redevelop Route 9, as they'll have to be developing plans for the additional stormwater impervious areas that they would be creating. So from a layout standpoint, I don't see any changes to what we are currently proposing to accommodate that widening.
But that stormwater plan on their part, would that result in needing that or needing area from your lot, or DOT's stormwater? You're saying any added stormwater, that would move from yours, would be taken out by DOT doing it, but they're going to have to do something?
DOT willing to do that. If they're adding lanes and widening it, they're gonna be adding significant impervious area. They're gonna have to develop stormwater management plan for all the new impervious that they create.
Assuming they do that wherever they locate those.
Their project would be perhaps miles long. They would have multiple properties where they would do a series of catch basins and do drainage into another appropriate lot area. I don't know where that would be along that stretch of road.
Okay. And mentioned the swapping the entrance east to west.
Yeah, I'm not sure I followed that comment as far as, I think she was mirroring the building.
Yeah, I think the idea was to move the entrance further from Route 9. Is that, is that correct, Ann?
Yes, that's correct. Flipping the west end to the east end. So you'd basically enter where employee parking is, drive north, to the north side of the car wash building, and then drive east, and then into the building for the car wash.
It's actually, what she's asking is, do you take the whole car wash concept and just flip it east to west? So you put the entrance to the car wash toward Route 9 exit, away from Route 9, that kind of?
Right, I think what that does is if you put our tellers roughly in this location, I don't think it would provide as much unsated stacking that we would have now. Right now, we have stacking for about 40 vehicles a year. If we put those tellers here, our stacking is gonna be minimized coming out of the site. You may cut half the amount of stacking.
The tellers could be on the same side of the building. I'm not, I'm not agreeing with Ann's proposal, I'm just saying, if you did that, the tellers would be on the same side of the building they're on now. It would just be, you'd be entering from the other side, and then be queued by the way.
I don't think you could do that, because your tellers would be occurring before your exit. You're entering, you're here.
Basically, you're just putting the whole thing, and it's just, you're gonna lose a lot of, a lot of your car store in there, and I don't think you want to do that.
I don't see a way to make that happen. I think what we've shown is that we have appropriate stacking on site. And then in order for there to be a conflict in this area, you were doing some math. I didn't say math, there's 99 cars going out of the site in an hour period. It's like a minute and a half per, one and a half cars for every minute. This light would have to be blocking that traffic for like six minutes without changing, before there'd be any potential town, but that would see that light being a six-minute light.
This is where the people driving their cars, like the ones that, you know, take the time to drive their car, after going through the car wash and vacuum, right? In and out of there as well.
Exactly.
Exactly. Then it would really block the car, the traffic, and people back now.
Yeah, we certainly want to minimize traffic through this area where the vacuums are. You'd want that to be a thorough, a safety issue.
You missed that added market, that squeaking clean cars coming out of the door towards your back two. This is true. Was that the concern though, Ann, was to provide more room on the road there to take up traffic?
Yes.
Yes. Anything else from the board? And the public hearing is still open, so we're still taking comments. Should I open this up or off this to the?
It needs to be opened.
Okay. Needs to be reopened or?
Opened, we haven't had one yet.
See, that's what I thought, but I don't have on my agenda that this is a public hearing.
Yeah, it is.
No, no.
Public hearing scheduled, yes, Monday, January 24th, at 7:01 PM.
Yeah, that one says, this one doesn't.
Yeah, mine's all good.
Oh, no, there it is. Why am I, wow, that's like getting the middle of this. All right, so mine has a finish, I'm sorry. My confusion. So then we need to open up the public hearing. Before we open it up, we'll just set our three ground rules. Number one, our tape recorder is in video, okay? Even if it wasn't, it would identify who you are, so if you wish to speak, we'd appreciate it if you could just say your name, so that way the minutes can reflect your comments. Number two, now I don't even remember the rules, this is terrible.
We're gonna use some sense of decorum.
No, that's a story. Well, anyways, if I missed one, I missed one. And number three is, we're gonna maintain some sense of decorum, so try to be polite, keep it pertinent to the discussion here and address the board. So, does anybody have any questions on this applicant? Yes, sir?
My name's Lance Silman, I own Fort Edmonds Express, we're across the street. I welcome the Hoffmanns to Southland Falls. I think we have a good neighborhood to the area, as they run the business, it seems to be quite well. We're all for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't see anybody here online. We do have one person in attendance, but I don't see any indication that they want to speak.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'll start, John. Jerry's okay?
Yeah, I think that was Eric saying he's all set.
Sorry, okay.
This is Jerry, I have, I have no further questions of the applicant.
Okay.
This is Ann. I do have a couple, these are really just follow-on, having read minutes from a few months ago, just this afternoon, there were things that were left open, I think, that we might need to address. When was it, there was supposed to be a review by the water superintendent?
And that is underway. The, I think the plans were delivered, because I was not informed of the interim water superintendent until December, late in December. But those plans have been forwarded for that review.
Okay, and then staff notes indicated that there should be, on the plans, something showing the method of connection to public sewer. I don't know that I, I recognize that being on the plans at this point.
So we are providing connections to the public sewer that are shown on the utility plan. Currently, the sewer is not installed in front of the site, or it's very close to being installed in front of the site. Would be our intention to connect to, I believe it's going to be a force main connection with a grinder pump to that force main. And certainly, that can be detailed out further once that force main is actually installed in front of our property.
So that's something that can be noted on the site plan, so it will be detailed at that time.
No problem.
Right, okay. There's SWIP review. LeBurg, I think, provide a letter December 8. I don't know if you folks have had an opportunity to address those. They didn't seem to be substantial, but they did seem to require some action on your part.
And he responds to Joe in the?
Sorry, I was taking notes on that. So certainly, the sewer note can be added to the plan, that is not an issue. And obviously, any approval offered by this court board is subject to approvals from the water department and the sewer department. Speaking of sewer, sewer is intended to, shall provide sewer to the Route 9 corridor and provide connections for them, so I'm assuming there's not going to be any issue with that origin or that entity, you know, connected to that. As related to the SWIP, we did provide the response to LeBurg, we have not heard back. It were relatively minor comments. Certainly, if appropriate, we want to approve that, we need a condition of the approval to finalize that review, we're gonna sign off from LeBurg.
So Joe, you have responded?
Yes, I was responding to in December, shortly after the letter payment.
Okay. The other question I have, and I think this might have, might have come up if we had gotten a full environmental assessment form. And that has to do with things like storage of chemicals on the site. That would have been a question asked in a full assessment form. And the question is whether or not you have any storages of chemical, 185 gallons or more above ground, or any storage of chemicals below ground.
There, I'm fairly certain the full EAF was provided. I just talked with the property owners and managers, there nothing, no quantity of chemicals stored on the site that would require DC permitting to be worked?
There's a super fund there, so the form may pick that up. There's a super fund a little through the downs, the form has already, so maybe it picks that up. So I have.
I'm writing that too.
Oh.
There's a super fund right behind the project, and then it's one more.
Just a few in the area.
I'm not sure I understood that response.
When you do an R-POP rated EAF, there's things in the register of the DC, and there's a super fund site right behind there, so that you probably would have picked up.
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking of store of remediation site. It's if in the process of their operation, they are storing chemicals on site. For example, the stuff you use to wash a car is a chemical.
Correct, and the response to that was, there's, the volume of detergents stored on the site does not exceed any DC threshold that would require permitting.
Does it exceed 185 gallons above ground?
Container?
No. No.
Okay. And you don't, your operations don't involve the use or storage or disposal of hazardous waste?
No.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, anything else? Then do that, I can say that it probably would be okay to take a motion to close the public hearing. Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mike, by the second.
On the second.
Second by there. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing, want to call a roll, Jim?
Yes, I do. Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Mr. Luthias?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Hey, that's unanimous?
Okay. We need to go through a secret, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm going to have to ask you if you have a copy.
Yes, I do.
If I ask that, I'm sure I do. Put my eyes on that. Part one. Okay, thank you so much. Hey, everybody. Yeah, part one, project information, does anybody have any questions on the information provided there? These are one through three.
And I think the only question I would have pertains to traffic. I believe the question, would this project result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? The check was no. I would like to see the Creighton Manning comments resolved before we can address that question.
Anne, you have a question number on that?
It's page two, item eight A.
Okay, I will start on the public transportation one underneath, okay. Um. This is traffic on the highway in front of the place, not traffic on site.
That's correct, and intersection operation.
So Anne, are you worried, concerned that this will increase the amount of traffic on Route 9 in front of the, substantially increase the amount of traffic on Route 9 in front of this facility?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so essentially, Route 9 right now has between 1,000 and 19,000 vehicles during peak hour. And the site is looking to add maybe 40 to 50, depending upon, and that's, you know, on all the different roads. So I'm just questioning the substantial increase in traffic, especially knowing that a lot of this is passed by traffic as well, and we didn't take credit for that.
Thank you for your expertise, but I was going to bring up the same topic. I'm not sure that I agree that this is going to increase the traffic amount to substantial, because I think probably a big chunk of your 99 cars will already be on Route 9.
Yes.
Right. I don't know, because I'm not in the car wash business, but I'm guessing that since most car washes aren't located on dead-end roads far away from traffic, that traffic flow in front is the driving force for marketing. So probably a good number of the cars are already driving by and need to cycle stuff. And that's not to say that Jerry would go and get his truck washed as a special trip, but.
Means Iowa would go to Queensberry.
So I agree.
I'll be driving by.
So I guess, I guess the definition substantial comes into play, and I don't know that I would be concerned with that, but the concern is noted, Anne?
Well, I think that when you have spikes during the peak hours, that that is where I would consider a measure of substantial.
Okay.
And I think although it's not on the short-form assessment as an impact to be considered. I do think that, again, this part two is really provided as guidance, it's not considered an exclusive list of considerations. I still would like to see some clarification on how the site layout might adversely impact improvements to Route 9 that are part of the corridor study.
There's a study, but there's not a project, right?
That's correct.
So.
What is, Joe, what's the width of the grassed area in front of the project right now, off the right-of-way?
Probably 20, 30-ish feet to the edge of pavement from the property level.
And depending on if there were a need, you would expect that there's some like need for, if there were a need for purchase of right-of-way, that that would happen on the opposing side of the road as well. You know, if you had to add a full lane width, and you did it all on this side.
You're still.
There, you know, you're still looking at a combination within the grassed area before you get into any developed area of the site. So.
And I, I appreciate Joe and you, Jim, trying to sort that out, but I think Creighton Manning might, you know, should weigh in here and explain to us, clarify what they mean about this at impact. There may be an impact that you're, you know, we're talking about right now that is not substantial. It's hard for me to tell from Creighton Manning's letter.
So Anne, I guess my question is, can we leave the answer no on this and address it in section two?
Yeah.
Or maybe even in the final approval?
Well, I think, I'm not trying to alter their form, I'm just making an observation that that might be something I would question. We've discussed it, I think we move on to part two.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yes, very good. Do we know, any other questions on the first section, pages one through three? Hearing done, moving on to section two.
Eric, did you have something?
No, I was just saying no.
Okay. And thank you guys, because my hearing isn't anywhere near good enough for some of this. All right, moving on to section two, and this is board participation time. So I agree with your question, and you guys can let me know what you think it should be. Starting with number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
Yes.
No?
No.
Will the proposed action, number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No.
No.
Will the proposed, number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Question number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by either walkway? No.
No.
I believe that should be conditioned on resolution Creighton Manning's comments.
Anne, can we do, can we consider the impact potentially small?
I don't know.
Okay.
It could be moderate to large, depending upon how the questions of trip generation and peak hour operation are resolved.
Okay.
And when you talk about substantial or large, as I understand it, it means that there's impact in the vicinity. It's not site-specific, and it's not just the adjoining site, but I'm concerned about traffic backup on 197 and 95, and on Route 9.
Okay, but can we shift some of that on DOT? As far as their study on this? Or do we become the driving force for DOT making a study of this?
I think the traffic has been addressed, I mean, when I said to him, how many, how many can you store in there? And they're like, well, just say 47 cars, you know?
Yeah, somewhere in the mid 40s.
So we're talking, we're talking 45 cars actually off the road, away from the place. I don't see where, I don't see where we're going to create a traffic problem. I don't see that.
And we're not busy during traffic time, we're busy in the middle of the day when everybody's ready to work.
Alana, can you go through briefly the impacts to intersections that you studied?
So if I can receive for just one moment, help me with the process here, is, just because I'm sitting in the middle doesn't mean I know all this stuff yet. Who decides, or what avenue decides whether a left-hand turn lane needs to be put there to guide traffic into this facility?
It is usually, and Alana, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's usually based on the grades that are assigned to levels of service. So if a turning movement in an intersection is operating, for example, hypothetically at a level of service B. They do their calculations on amount of traffic generated, and where that traffic is going to travel in that intersection, and they assign certain move, traffic to certain movements.
Hang on just a minute, you keep saying that, assuming I know who they are.
The traffic engineer on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, all right, there we go.
Right? Traffic engineer on behalf of the applicant assigns those movements to certain, or that traffic to certain movements in the intersection. If that volume of traffic to a certain movement rises to a large enough level, it can result in a drop in that grade. Like from B to C or B to D. And it's dependent upon a couple of things. First of all, how is that movement operating today? Because that operates in a range. And if you're in the top end of that range, where you're pushing, maybe pushing over into the, you know, a loss in service, it's not going to take very many cars to do that.
The last straw.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
And so my understanding of these things is, we usually look at intersection operations, and you focus less on volume in the actual road. Because typically roads have a lot of passing. Where they begin to fail is at the intersections and the turning movements. Alana, have I?
Yes, it's always, almost always the intersection is your constraint. The analysis for this one, as you were asking, Jim, is showing the intersection, its way of operating at overall, overall level service B, not the B during the build, C during the build, with level service C 25 seconds or better. These operations are the same, whether the left turn lane is restripped as a left turn lane or stays as the through right. Our perspective is that it would, you know, it should be nice to get the left turning traffic out of the way of the through traffic or access to the site, but it's not necessary. I think it's also worth noting that Creighton Manning's review of the evaluation, they noted that the methodology used to calculate intersection operations is consistent with current industry standards, and essentially, they're good with it. They were looking for a worst-case evaluation, just because there's a range in what. The actual data is not very good when it comes to car wash facilities, so you do rely heavily upon operations at a facility and how it actually works. Hoffins knows how their sites operate. They know that on busy days, they're going to come a lot more customers, which is why as they progress through their site designs, now they have storage for 40 vehicles on their site. To make sure there's not going to be an issue where something may have happened in the past where there could have been going out to the main road. In this instance, they've modified the site, so that when they do have those key operations, that's not going to be an issue. If there is a day when there's 200, 250 vehicles going to the site, it's going to be very rare, and they can be accommodated to fall on the site because of the way this is developed and built. What, in my conversations with Mark, his point was, I just want the town to know that depending upon how much storage there is on-site, this could be a potential for backing onto the roadway. You'd need 60 vehicles to be waiting to go into this site in order to have it back up onto Route 9.
Whoever's backing on the road, which is a bigger road and a bigger park. I don't see where.
Well, we can only stack 42 cars on the other way, the other day, so. And not listen to the car, not in the car wash, not in the car, in the car wash. And so, this is, and this is when you help alleviate some of that part of the issue.
And then the whole lane road from that, so it's a bigger road.
Yeah, so the stacking is very similar now, because this is going to take 45, we stack 42, and that's a single lane going in, and we try to make it wider now with the new towers in. But it's limited, it's not as long as this.
And then the road is twice or three times larger than this.
Could we just have your names for the record? I don't need to be. Thank you, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. The traffic study that you prepare that states that the intersections will operate in a level service C with or without this site being built, is agreed upon by the town's designated engineer to do it, that this project will have no impact to the intersection as a result of the build.
Yes, they have a reason for this.
So we have no drop in the level of service?
Between no going to build goes from B to C, but whether or not you have the turn lane, it's C or C, it doesn't matter which one.
I see, okay.
It was my understanding, it was dropping from B to D in some times.
No. That's incorrect.
And if I can go back to my question, because this was all well and good, but I still haven't gotten the answer, what triggers DOT making their decision? You can't be the applicant's engineer.
They do the same review that we're essentially doing. They look at the data that the applicant supplies, and they either agree with it, or they probe for further questions until they, they get some level of assurance at their end that they, they believe it's accurate. And if it, if it does drop levels of service, they're going to ask for improvements, either through signalization, adding lanes, and maybe things even more expensive sometimes.
So here's my question, have we gotten any determination from DOT whether this is the specific level of service at this intersection? We've sent stuff out to them.
Not to DOT, Alana's been corresponding with them exclusively, I, we have nothing.
So I spoke with Guy today, who was anticipating having a letter for me tonight. Unfortunately, that didn't happen because he needs to talk to another person. But his initial response to me was that the volumes look good, the trip distribution looks good, the analysis looks good, the results look good. I just needed to turn this with my signal guys, is essentially what he said, because it requires turning on and adjusting the traffic signal itself.
Okay, so one more question then for me, and we'll fill out my dumb level here pretty well. If for some reason, we or DOT determine that your numbers are not reasonable, regardless of what our engineer says, or if it turns out that they are, there is reification here. It isn't go ahead and build the project or don't build the project, it's DOT will decide whether they need a turn lane, whether they need a left-hand signal, whether they need.
Yes, exactly. And they will require, so they would provide the approval, and then they take you through the permitting process. So they were doing every single step of the way before anybody is allowed to be on-site to make anything. So it's a very detailed review with the state.
And John, Guy knows us very well, we just did one of them, so.
Hi, Jane, my lady.
So they know who John is. Um, we're not, this is unusual, um, so.
I mean, I'm asking all these questions because number one, Anne brought up some pretty interesting or logician concerns and number two, I keep hearing that, that the framework we use for the traffic study doesn't really collect car washes well. So we're kind of depending on, we're kind of depending on your expertise and your experiences, okay? And I just want to make sure that if we do go ahead with this and it turns out, oops, you know, this was off, that there is some remediation other than we got cars back up on our path.
Exactly. And that was Mark's whole point in pointing out that like the trip generation for car washes isn't great. So what does it look like if there's more traffic at the site, which is why we did the 100 vehicles in and out of additional analysis, um, for a peak operation.
And being that this isn't a, people don't have to go get their car washed. So you're saying that if the traffic is backed up, a lot of people just say, I'll come back later.
And just then go on.
Um, the other question I had for you is if it did become a problem, is there anything that you can do differently on site to remediate on your own site on those days where there is a peak? Cause I'm going to guess you guys have a good idea, like, you know, spring pause, there's certain days where people go get their car washed or whatever that, you know, before a holiday or whatever. Is there something that, that you're able to do on site to handle any possible peak pressure that might back up?
During busy times, our systems automatically increase production slightly. So that we can keep, you know, production moving and actually increase it slightly. See speed the cycle just a little better.
I remember the time just, I'm forgetting how much I remember. Where people have to help with.
My girl.
I mean, we'll staff, we'll staff.
My girl, the Harry Kane.
It's not like, oh hey, we got a real big, we can see forecast and we know that hey, we have to take advantage of today, it's going to be really big. Let's staff our teller with people so that people aren't fumbling with money at that age and, or having trouble to keep up with the trends.
I just, I just want to play it out and I don't want to get caught up in the town, but I mean, but my own personal experience with local car wash and I've been trying several days when they are busy, it's very efficient. It's a, it's a real professional system there. It just, everything works. There's, there's people there that are well-staffed and it's just, it just go, go, go. It's just a, a good, a good thing. And also as far as seeing cars out on the route, I'm, I'm not concerned with that at all. Just, just know what I've been seeing. And again, we're putting 45 cars off the road, so.
Alright, so in that case, we wrap this all together here. Question number five, will proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit like in a walkway? Do we have an agreement on whether it's a no or small impact or moderate to large impact? So we can move along.
I mean, no, no to small, John.
Okay.
I'll agree, no to small. I would say though, my, my anecdotal opinion is that a left-hand turn lane is going to be better than not having one. I use that intersection a lot. Just, that's just my opinion, but.
Jerry, joining my expressions here, I think that the, the applicant would also like that left-hand turn lane.
Yes.
Be easier to get into their business, so. Okay, I'll give it a small.
And I acknowledge I'm in minority, but I, I would stay, say that it might still be moderate to large and we can move on.
Alright, it's, do we know that in, I'm a seeker here? And moving along to number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No to small.
Will the proposed, number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No, too small.
Public, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Question number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of enforcement, historical, tech, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
I think we took care of that when the car, other car wash went. Number nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, examples wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? Number 10, will the proposed act result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No.
No.
And number 11, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I'm going to say on number 10, it's probably going to improve those conditions outside because of the already existing conditions. And then I think our last question is the one, does it glow in the dark? But I don't see it on the page. So does anybody have any reason to believe that there's an environmental problem on this site? Hearing none, moving along. Going on is part three, determination of significance. We had no moderate to large impact answers. So would anybody like to do something with our short form EAF?
Make the motion for a neg deck on the Hoffman car wash EAF.
I have a motion from Eric for a negative declaration for the speaker or short form EAF on Hoffman car wash. And that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second, any discussion?
I was saying again. Uh, could we make the, the negative declaration subject to NICE dot approval and resolution of Creighton Manning's issues?
I don't believe so. Maybe do that at the, at the approval.
Yeah.
I think you do that on the site plan approval, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion in a second. Discussion seems exhausted. Do we do a roll call?
Yep.
Okay, Jim, can you call?
Yep, Mr. Schaver. Ms. Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Anne? Anne?
Yes, I said yes.
Oh, sorry. Didn't, we didn't hear, uh, John?
Yes. Okay, so with that taken care of. Um, Jim, on this forum, there's all sorts of stuff to fill out here, name and lead agency data.
Yeah, I'll do all that.
It says print and type name and responsible officers, that you or me?
That's you.
Okay, so I have to print my name and, okay. So with that done, does anybody like to do anything else?
I'll make a motion of, 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 with the condition of final letter of the SWIP. Final letter of Creighton Manning. Does DOT issue a letter? No, like the letter, DOT letter? Is there a sewer in the EAF?
No, there is, there is a water, there's an interim water and sewer superintendent. And then just for the board's knowledge on something like this, this complex, we will ask for a pre-construction meeting. Um, before, you know, construction begins and those parties will all be at the table, uh, the water superintendent. And the engineers to, uh, go over any final issues.
And is this also subject to, by preliminary approval, then a final approval when these other conditions are, are satisfied?
That depends on how you structure your approving resolution. It can be final approval with conditions, or it can be a preliminary with conditions.
I would, I would prefer preliminary with conditions if, if Meredith is amenable.
We don't usually do that at the second.
Correct, but if it's, if it's preliminary, that means the applicant has to come back. So, so I'm sorry, I was trying to keep up with you, Meredith. You have final letter on SWIP, DOT, Creighton Manning. And, uh, sewer and water, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What about, we make it a condition prior to the issuance of your building permit?
No, what we usually do is we, we do it prior, we do it prior to signature.
Yeah, those conditions that are put on those milers can show up and until those conditions are met, the milers are not set, so nothing moves forward.
I'm comfortable with that.
And, and, and the point being, just so, you know, if, if the board does want to go another, if there's any kind of further discretion on your part that you think is necessary, then, then you would not authorize that. You would just, you'd have the applicant come back. But if you think you're on sure enough ground here that you can proceed, then you can condition upon, uh, these conditions are placed before signature of the plan.
Seems we've got quite a few conditions.
We have four.
Uh, South Blens Falls Fire Department.
Oh, I didn't.
Um, resolution of the traffic study, issues with Creighton Manning.
Yeah, that's on.
Yeah, I know it's on there, but I don't know that that's something that, that you leave, you know, as a final, as opposed to something that comes back to us.
Maybe what would happen if we can't meet any of these conditions, the approval is null and void, we'd have to come back and revise plan or to either meet those conditions or alter those conditions, so.
I don't feel like there's enough outstanding. Yeah.
I would just suggest the traffic issues are maybe a bit more subjective than whether the superintendent signs off on, you know, water superintendent or fire department. And they may come back with comments themselves. And if it's a preliminary approval, maybe they're more likely to be open about their comments.
DOT won't issue any type of permit without full resolution of any concerns from the town. Just won't do it.
I don't think you're going to hear back from the board.
Well, and I think, I think if we condition it that with Creighton Manning's review, then basically if there's any outstanding items between Creighton Manning and the applicant, then that conditions it to, we're, we're waiting for them to be taken care of where or another. I don't know that I'm going to argue with Creighton Manning on a traffic review.
I'll come.
If I need them, I want to see what they, with their contract.
Alright, so I, I have, I have five things. Five conditions.
So what?
And as I understand it, you're conditioning that, uh, prior to signature. So it's final, okay.
Alright, so I guess refresh my memory, do we do two different approvals, preliminary and final on site plan? I thought of a subdivision, right?
Yeah, a subdivision. I, I, I think I can remember once or twice where you have done a preliminary, but typically not.
Alright, so it's for final approval then, is, is the motion of involvement, okay? Uh, with the conditions, do we have a second?
This is Jerry, I'll second it.
Okay, so now we have a second, we can have a discussion on this. With these conditions, we, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's as we've already discussed, if the milers don't get signed, so the conditions have been met.
That's correct.
So.
And you don't, therefore you don't execute the approval until the milers are signed.
Exactly.
Not on approved site plan.
This is a conditional approval. So here Johnson, if it comes together, everybody's happy, then the final approval is on sign of the milers. Correct. As far as getting rid of those conditions.
And Joe, just so it'll, it'll, um, it'll make the, the signing that much more convenient if, like if a, a letter comes in from, um, from Labor's in a SWIP per se, I'd like that as a note on the site plan, you know, as per the condition. The letter, the date of the letter on the, on the site plan, see my point? So when the people come in to sign it, they know that that's been received.
Correct, or, or provided letter from Burge says the plans as presented on such and such a date are complete.
Right.
And you've been taking notes?
Yes.
Cause there was a leaky one outstanding item that needed to be put on the plan. Then I grabbed the last six conditions out here.
Sewer.
Was it sewer go up? There was something that you were going to put on the plan.
That was a sewer.
No, it was something else. But anyways, I can't remember things, but if you took notes on it, it's in our minutes.
Just the water and sewer service, I think.
Is that, okay. So we don't have every six conditions, just make sure that's on the plan and I'll take a look at the minutes and make sure they're on there for signature.
I think it was water, sewer, the mine.
Okay.
The way down superintendent's water.
Alright, so we have a motion, we have a second. We exhausted the discussion, if we have, do we do a roll call on this?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Schaver?
Yes.
Ms. Mathias?
Yes.
Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Anne?
Both.
And John?
Hi. I have six to one.
I think that's, uh, five to one.
Five, excuse me. I'm myself twice, five to one. Did I say that, Kerry?
Thank you very much.
Final approval, we have a bunch more to do and we have some reviews to wait for and hopefully.
And you usually, John, you have the second resolution about the signatures?
Oh yeah, we need to have a, we need to have a resolution about signing the milers, guys.
I'll make a motion that the chairman and one other member of the board sign the milers when.
How do we follow the conditions?
When the conditions are.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, they were saying, I, I oppose. Okay, moving along. Okay.
I'll abstain on that.
Okay, Anne's abstaining on that. You don't want the chairman and one other member of the board to sign the milers? Okay, so we have a. Oh, yeah, yeah, I was wondering. Okay, so next up I have project name, Harrison Avenue Storage Units.
Has to be that secret.
We have that. Anything, sir, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
The chairman and it's.
Thing is, see the town's.
Give me time, but when he can't, you're already. Put those man gate down. Put those man gate down.
I did. Yeah.
Check it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, let's, let's hear your shirt.
Thanks.
Okay, we're all set. We're all set, let's go. I don't have a starter, then I didn't want to have to reach over. Tell us the starter, what you got here?
Well.
What's new?
Uh, it wasn't really what it did, it was, it was just so, so, so. It was washed away. I had a bad note in there, apparently. So rather than develop it.
It's good though. See, the guys, it's good though, thank you. The staff really cares to run us in this room. Okay, sir, go ahead.
Anyway, number five, I don't remember five, I don't serve the development. Uh, I put some meltdowns back out, I wanted to see them to show that it does drop off towards the bag and that's sandy desert out there.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. What we do when we get those gates in, it's going to hold the fire company, they have lock boxes, and then they'll be able to unlock those.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, do that.
It'll make it good.
There's two gates on either side, one in the rear. Yeah, no, they, we wouldn't get it up there.
Yeah, it's an improvement, thank you.
Yeah, that's cool.
You're, you're being sarcastic.
You can tell Alcatraz put it out there, I think, really.
Yeah, they'd put them anywhere in this town, I understand. Hey, John? John?
Yes.
Um, just, just so you know, I'm sitting here remotely, it's difficult to hear the applicant, and we'll probably need you to summarize what was just told to you guys. I don't know if Eric or Anne were able to hear it real well, but I was not.
Okay, I think that's a very good point.
I think the applicant needs to move towards the center of the room where the speaker is.
Yeah. What we have here is we have half, half the hall orders right there. And half of us are here, so you have to project so that everybody can hear plus Ross. Ross will go into the public via the internet, so. So your project is Harrison Avenue Storage, is your future expansion adding what?
Uh, well, uh, it's going to be six. Let's see, that was, uh, thirty by one forty building and one thirty by seven unit building. So, dome south building, yeah.
Well, what's the total square footage of all the buildings, Tom?
You should have figured it out, yeah. All the same time, so it's just thirty by one forty times six.
Okay.
And then thirty by seven.
So there's six and, there's actually six and a half units that are all the same. Plus that's a half, that's seventy instead of one. Okay.
I got it down, that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, yep.
I got it.
Okay. Coming out of that, you were addressing that, you, you filed some of our requests from last meeting, can you share them with the rest of the?
I, I did, uh, it was, we put the self fence, uh, you can set events going over. Uh, put some elevations on, Jim, to show that, you know, the grade roughly for the area, which drains started back and they can, forty acres, I'm just getting it in, forty acres, quite a lot of land there. Anyway, and, uh, and, uh, I put a note in there, we no further development due to the perpetability, uh, of the property. And I put the gates on from over there, you wanted to see those gates in the fence, and we got them on there. Uh, so that's for, to keep people be able to get in and out of in case of emergency.
And he has since also submitted a seeker form.
That's fair to see.
And I, the board, by my notes, had previously determined that a public hearing was not necessary due to it's a continuation of the existing use of the site. And Matt had re, Matt concurs that, um, the erosion plan as, as he submitted with the grading and so on is sufficient.
Okay.
My only comment on that is make sure you take it down when you're done.
Too much.
Say you take your self fence down after your.
Oh, yeah, James is already there, make sure they're down to the man's before they do it. Make sure the self fences are there. Uh, just trust that to my client, and it's a pretty, pretty cool thing. He'll make sure this thing clear up.
Okay. So I did determine that we didn't feel a need to do a public hearing on this. We do have a seeker for a short form, I don't have a seeker too. That's, I do have the first one. Does everybody have a chance or everybody take a moment?
Do you need part two?
Yes. Everybody take a chance to review part one of the short environmental assessment form for the Harrison Avenue Storage Units. Are there any corrections or?
It looks fine.
I have no comment.
Yeah, nothing here.
Okay, then, moving right along, I think we're good. Moving right along to our section, part two. I'll read them and you guys can determine known as small impact or moderate to large. Will the proposed action create a material problem with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the, number two, will the proposed action result in change in the use of intensity or use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No.
Question three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Question four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walk.
Oh.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Number seven, will the proposed action impact the existing public or private water supplies?
Oh.
Being published in private wastewater treatment utilities?
Oh.
Question eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource?
Oh.
No.
Question nine, will the proposed action result in change in natural resources, example wetlands, water bodies, groundwater air quality, flora or fauna?
Oh.
No.
Question ten, will the proposed action result in increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Nope.
And question eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or to human health?
No.
No.
Be exact, we've answered all those questions, known as small. Would anybody like to make a motion for a recommendation on the short form environmental assessment for Harrison Avenue Storage Units?
I'll make a motion to, uh, for a negative declaration for the seeker for the Harrison Avenue Storage Units.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Jerry, second. By Anne.
Yep.
Having a motion, second, is there any discussion on that? Here we go. We can call a roll on that.
Mr. Shaver. Ms. Mathias.
Yes.
Uh, Anne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
John?
So having exhausted that part of tonight's agenda, would there be anything else you'd like to do for Harrison Avenue Storage Units?
No. I think I'll make a motion to approve Harrison Avenue.
I didn't date the last.
Storage. Harrison Avenue Storage Units.
Anne's made a motion for, or, excuse me, Meredith has made a motion for.
Approval of Harrison Avenue Storage.
Approval of Harrison Avenue Storage Units. So I have a second for that motion.
I'll second that, John.
Second for Mary. We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion on motion for approval?
Nope.
Here we go. Jim, will you call a roll on that?
Yes, Mr. Shaver.
Yeah.
Ms. Mathias.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Have a unanimous, so. At this point, we have an approval. Is there anything else we would like to do?
Make a motion for, uh, the chairman and one member to sign the milar drawings when presented.
Yeah, I, I gotta get that for you.
Do we have a second on that?
Take a second.
Second for, for Mary on that one. So that was not too controversial, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. There in opposition?
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
And, uh, it's a very, very, very nice, thank you.
Are you third, third caller for this, or third nominee agenda for tonight, is Suroh South Road something? Get name of Suroh Builders Incorporated. We have that.
Yes, we do. Uh, Matt, are you there, Matt Steves? Matt? He's on the list here. Matt, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I had to find my unmute button there, sorry about that.
It works a lot better.
All right, Jim, do you have anything to read in before I start, or no?
Yeah, sure. As the real chairman would say, tell us a story.
But I, I think Jim's got the history there in front of him most likely on this. This is a four lot subdivision on South Road just up from Route Nine. Um, we were in, I believe, in November of 2017 for the concept plan, uh, went through the checklist and the information that the planning board needed to move with the preliminary. Um, at one point, we're contemplating going through a variance, but we have adjusted the lot lines for the, uh, lot width at the building line so that we do not need to, uh, move forward with the, the, the variance application. Uh, we have, uh, detailed out all the requirements to move forward with preliminary, including the, uh, long form, um, sent the information to ship. Oh, you have the data in there as far as the EAF mapper. Um, all the driveways do have the turnarounds. We have performed the perk test and the deep test on every lot. And we've also widened the driveways as requested, and you also have your SWIP plan in front of you as well.
Okay. Or any questions for this applicant?
Matt, this is Anne. Um, it looks to me like the width is less than 200 feet.
I believe it's 175 at the building line, am I correct there, Jim?
That's correct.
Is it supposed to be 200 feet?
Uh, not in this zone, I believe it's 175 according to your zoning code.
This is R3, right?
No, R2, R3, uh, lot, depth, lot width 200 feet, 175 at the building with a 200 foot average, I believe it is, or no, 175 at the building line is what I have on my, uh, notes and from the first meeting we had. Hold on.
At the moment, we'll let him, Jim, take through this code book looking for.
Yeah. What do you mean, it's all the way up to 1989? Okay, the R3. Minimum lot width is 200 feet. And we measure that at the position of the front building wall of the principal structure, the principal building.
Okay, was that, uh, Jim, or was that, did we discuss that as one of the reasons we're going to go for the variance and then?
That's correct.
And I, and it's been so long, Matt, since we talked about this, this was what, 20, what, what's the last year this was here?
Uh, we submitted 2017 for concept, we got that, and then we did submit for the variance for the 20, I think it was the 27th of February of 2019.
And was that ever acted upon?
That, I'm trying to find in my notes.
I don't believe it was.
Cause at the time, we decided to hold off, we were revamping on some of the lot lines, uh, some of the concerns where we didn't have any driveways coming off Route Nine. We do not, um.
I, I remember this, you were thinking about potentially a reconfiguration regarding that issue. But I, again, that's just memory.
Yep.
We can't, we can't even, we can't approve an undersized lot without. No, no, you cannot. No, you cannot. So as proposed, the lots are, do not meet the minimum lot width for the zone? That's correct. If, if you have Matt 175, Matt, that's insufficient.
Sounds like, sounds like we need a replan.
Or a variance application.
Right, yep, one of the two. There's not really, I can't see there's much for us to do on this.
Well, I think that's where it was left the last time, it needed a variance for that width. Trying to avoid having driveway software.
See, I, I really haven't had a chance to, to turn a page on this, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if you were here, Jim, when this was in front of me.
No, I was.
Were you?
Yep.
Well, that's not an issue, but looking at it for the, the preliminary, just to make sure you have everything you need, then we can take this, Jim, and, um, submit it right back for the, the variance app, if that's what you wish. Um, as far as the board, I mean, you know, moving forward with the planning board, uh, obviously we get the, the variance from the ZBA, then it opens you up to review this. But as far as the configuration and where it's located, do you have any issues with the subdivision layout as it, as it is before I move it forward to the zoning?
Other than the fact that it doesn't meet minimum lot widths?
Understood. So as far as the driveway locations with the turnarounds and the wide driveways and no entrances off of Route Nine, um, you have no other issues with that in, at this point, I should say. Um, and then we'll move forward with the variance application and then come back in front of this board.
I'm, I, this is Jerry, I prefer the driveways off of South Road. I can see, is there, is there a reason, is there a reason why that last lot to the south, there's, there's just, there's like a, a fifth lot that doesn't show a house on it, is that a part of this subdivision?
No, that's a separate tax parcel that's already been, uh, built upon and sold.
Okay.
It is not part of this application.
Matt, uh, uh, this is Jim. Um, looking at the, this driveway plan here on, what are we on, page? Do you remember your page or overall subdivision plan? Where you show the driveways?
Yes.
It, have you done any preliminary grading on those? Cause it looks like there is some, uh, there is some slope there to overcome. It, is that, is that going to work, or is it grade?
It, it, it's going to work. We have, uh, Tom Hutchins, Hutchins Engineering, he's done all the engineering on this, and he's got the, the stormwater plan and he's got a, a rough grading plan, um, that I can submit for the next, uh, meeting.
Okay.
What did I notice on lot four? The proposed location for the sewer seems to be at a pretty good grade. Uh, Stephanie has to say, excuse me. So is that something that you looked into?
Yeah, we can rotate it back up toward the back of the house a little bit. We're trying to keep it parallel with the contours there. And, and that slope at that point is about 11 to 12 percent, and your New York State Code says you can't put a. And your New York State Code says you can't put them on over 15% slopes. So it's, it's, it's fairly suitable right there, and we'd like to keep them parallel, so you're not cutting a, a, a lot of grading in there. It kind of fits in with the existing grade, so we really don't have to, uh, regrade that area and create a steeper slope in the back of the septic. Uh, we can look at sliding it back and maybe rotating it slightly, but again, you can see it's parallel with the existing contours. We'd like to keep it that way, and it is within the guidelines of the, uh, of the New York State Department Health Septic. And it is slopes that aren't too steep in there, and the soils are very suitable for the septics in that area.
Okay, thank you.
And you are anticipating a stormwater review by LaBerge, correct?
Correct. I submitted the stormwater review check for you.
And you, you said you did pay the fee?
Yes, I did.
Anybody else?
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna opt the route of going for a variance?
Yeah, I know we had discussed this previously, and maybe it's, you know, our mistake that I thought we, we were shooting for the 175, but maybe that was to accommodate the variance. So that we could prove we had 175 at all the buildings. Maybe it was the R2 zone that had the 175. I can't remember off the top of my head, Jim. I'm sorry about that.
That's quite a last one.
But it stays consistent with the neighborhood, with the, uh, the 175 foot lot widths. Um, and I know that's one of the criteria, so, um, I would just assume for the, I already have the application filled out from 2019. It's just revise it on your new form and submit it back, and we'll just do both meetings next month.
If I remember correctly, the community, um, the lots are small, but those houses are northern homes, houses, so it's like, you know, you're looking at maybe 1,000 square foot homes. And then exact proximity of that, that particular piece of land. So these are gonna be a little bit bigger than 1,000 foot homes, right?
Yes, they're very, they're typically, I think what we show is some of the Saron models there. And, uh, uh, I believe they're right around the 16, 14 to 1600 square foot range.
Yeah.
I would just like to, this is Jerry again, just one comment. I have, somebody mentioned earlier about the driveways intersecting with South Road, just to make sure that those, that intersection, the slope, uh, when they intersect with the road is acceptable to the highway department?
Yes. That's become, that, that's, uh, brought up because of the just west parcel. Just west of where these lots are, Wash Up Down as in South Road.
Yep, we'll make sure we take a look at all that and we have it, uh, accommodated for you.
Um, and just as a practical matter, um, next month, that, that's a, a holiday, um, so the, the planning board meeting is already, you guys already moved your meeting to the 28th. And I suspect the zoning board may push back to, um, that would be, uh, March 2nd. But I'll have, I gotta confirm that with the zoning board tomorrow, uh, this Wednesday.
And Claire, along your map, the parcel that's to the east, listed as tax parcel 89.1-1-18, that's owned by somebody, right?
That's correct.
Okay, can that name be put on the map?
Yeah, we can place the owner on there. Yes, we can. It, it was a sep, it was a separate parcel owned, and I believe the, the house was built by Saron's. And that's been, you know, occupied for, I think, two or four years. So I will put the current owner's name on that map for you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions from the applicants to us?
I'm all good. I think I know exactly what you need, and, um, I appreciate your time, and like I say, get it right back in so that, uh, the same map will be going back in. I'll just put that owner's name on there. Um, we'll have some of the grading on the driveway for you from the sketch plan that we have here. And we'll submit the same plan, uh, back to the zoning board.
Sounds like a plan, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Jim? Jess, why didn't Matt get a map to South Road?
Pardon?
Mike, can this packet can get anything for the South Road map?
Katrina put it together. I have to ask her.
Okay, is you gonna just throw out the next one?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, moving along, new business. Project named Late Squay subdivision. Property redevelopment to subdivision sketch plan. Located on Jackson Road, Town Road. What do we got?
How's it going?
Well, it was going a little slow in the beginning, but we're recording a lot, so. Been here for the whole night, but, you know.
It's easy for us, uh, a pretty basic subdivision. Owners down the street had approached me, they don't follow my career, and, um, pretty to, you know, purchase their property and then help serve a subdivision here, so. Been working with Jim, and obviously, we're in our preliminary meeting to see what you guys think of the overall plan and layout. Uh, done some preliminary work with the engineers as far as, uh, homework in regards to the soil additions. Everything seems to be perfect for, uh, the south side. I also met with our D'League water superintendent, which was, um, he's a big problem.
Jesse?
Yeah, Jesse Fisher. So Jesse, myself, and, uh, the town highway guy, we were there, and he already walked the site. Knows it's a pretty easy setup. I've also got touch with National Rivers. So those guys are extending the main currently, cause I'm building a house for 14 Jackson across from, from my parents who live at Seven Jackson. So I was born, you know, not here, but I spent most of my life in this neighborhood, so. Um, I'd like to see a nice subdivision here, certainly improve on the neighborhoods. So water was pretty simple. Jesse just said we do extend, we extend the, uh, the main there, it's a six inch main, goes all the way to the end of Jackson. See that little bit on our map? There's a hydrant there, so that would just be a quick zip break down. Um, the benefit to having a subdivision here is now, as I just explained, the 14 Jackson was owned, uh, by, uh, geez, what's his name? He would allow the town road to turn the, uh, the tow trucks around in that little lot. But that's not gonna be an option anymore, not, not to kind of push, in fact, it means you call the set here, but it, it would be nice for them to have a place to, to actually scoot in and turn around with their lot. This will give them the opportunity. And they're all, like, nice plot sizes, they all conform within the zone. We did, we were shooting for a few more lots, but once we, uh, we actually only really needed the, the 175, I believe, or 125, I can't. Yeah, 175. So, everything conforms, septic will work, the house, did they?
Yeah, this is the one, this is the R2 district.
Yeah, the 175 or two, so the houses will be, you know, similar to Saron, and 15 are here to 2,000 square foot range. They have a couple people that are super interested in already purchasing lots in this area. And yeah, that's, that's the whole deal. Oh, the other thing is, the, um, the property right behind, right next to this parcel, it says Julie, Julie and Mary Burdrin. Uh, he's become friend of Ryan, and given him the first, uh, right of refusal to purchase a lot, the two right behind his house. So he tends to do that. And I also worked with Michael and Beth Brody on their, um, parcel to give them 75 feet clearance on the back of their house. That was part of the deal with the, with the purchase of his property, so. That's already been done. You see that, um, that little marked area that's already been removed from the subdivision as well, so. Still wanna kind of work with the neighbors to make sure everything conforms on their lights.
That's my story.
So, so the lot right behind you, the guys already agreed about, for that? Yeah, so I have, you know, obviously, right now, I don't know exactly where our, our lot cost for development, but I've given them a rough price, uh, he's, he's been pretty cool. He actually works with the DCE, so. I know exactly who he is. He's a good guy. I'm sure, I'm like, couldn't be any better. They're my first paid subdivision, and also, should be known, this is, would be my, my first break from start to finish subdivision. I have a couple others, um, under construction, so.
It's been a long way.
Yeah, it's trying.
So, it's kind of cool, it's not really your project, it's all about the, oh, spring, put fields behind Tango Wood. That's gonna have a name of a change. I think they're gonna have a second access road, go down that.
Okay.
More of that, like, you know, far, far.
Yeah. We've heard about this.
Can they, they're moving some of the fields, they wanna put the dracow behind Tango Wood School. And I think there's an access over Jackson. Yeah, so, just so you're aware, so, you know.
There is an access probably right, right by the hydrant right there, just down here on the jack. Yep, they want to piece a lot of property down there, so.
And my other comment, I did the seeker form, um, the EAF mapper, and, um, that parcel's in a DCE wetland buffer, but the wetlands down the hill, and that would be the buffer all the time. But I think we'll have to do a donation and just clear that up, make sure that there's nothing, and then, I don't, do you know what the process is when they're?
Usually when you're in a buffer, you just have to get a permit from DCE for having to do. Even if it's, even if it's, you know, clearing for your septic or anything like that, you just need a permit.
Okay. No problem.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea as you work towards final, for, for that area that's in it, to start that process as soon as you can.
Okay.
Yeah, the first one to do is, um, once it's on, like in spring, pass a 45.
Yeah, he's on right now, by the way. I didn't know if you knew that. He's on.
Yeah, if he has a, like, a donation person, just go out and make sure of the resources, they engage the DCE. And if there's nothing there, then they'll usually streamline it. If there is something found, maybe have a back and forth with them. And ship your lots or whatnot, so, just, if you did, if you do this seeker form, uh, online, it'll populate that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we made sure, probably stayed above the bridge, and, uh, we stayed away from any of that slopes, or probably that they see.
Yeah, the buffer is sometimes relevant, so.
Cool.
Okay.
So that, that comes to my question now, all right? And I like the smaller maps, my eyes don't like, but I like them easier to work with. On the location here towards the west, you have, you have, it says retain recharge area to be designed drainage and easement area. And then on the title map, that seems to be at the bottom of a very steep grade.
Show me where you're talking about, sorry.
Right here.
Oh, no, no, that's not the recharge area, absolutely not.
Okay, cause I'm looking at it, and it, it says that, uh, so, so you're gonna put that down there on that steep grade, and I'll see how you do that. It's like a dam or a tank or?
George and I have actually discussed, potentially, you know, discussing putting the recharge area in the cul-de-sac as, as an option. I don't know if it's preferred in this town or not.
Because to be honest with you, it'd be easy to get the water to go to that location.
Yeah, we don't wanna.
You wanna, you wanna, Chris, you wanted to check very early on with Paul, or Joseph about that?
Yeah.
And see what his take.
As far as the cul-de-sac and recharge areas?
Yeah.
All right, make sure you go with Paul. Is that, is that something you guys are seeing in the past, or?
Uh, it's been proposed, talk about.
Okay.
And, and the reason being, I think he looks at them on a case-by-case basis, depending on, upon the conditions and the soil type and all that kind of thing. Just wanted, we need to check with him very first.
No problem.
Okay, so, anything else from the board on this?
A real quick question. Uh, how wide is the road?
Well, that would have to be at least, what, 60 feet, or 15, 16 feet?
60 feet to the right.
Can I answer that one?
Sure, go ahead, George.
What we did is we, uh, went to your website, and, uh, the right of way and the road and the cul-de-sac are all according to Town and Row specs.
That's right. Awesome. That's really a great way to do that.
Good job, George.
Makes it easy for everybody.
Thank you.
Just an advance notice for you, as per what we were being told by the postal service, is you may need to put a mail kiosk in.
You been down there yet? It's been, been, uh, single boxes now.
What's that?
It's, it's all single boxes now in front of the house, and we think I'll put one at the end.
I, from what I've heard from two of the local mail postmasters, is they're having troubles getting an outmail minute, and they are asking all subdivisions to be mail kiosks. It's, I think, I mean, that my mail didn't get delivered twice last month, or twice last week, because of the shortage of mail. So, they are asking on large subdivisions. Now, what I'm gonna recommend is they can check with them, cause I don't know if 11 lots is a large subdivision or not. Sure. Okay, but I do know that they want that, so you may have to find a way to fit that in.
I think you're gonna find that they do want the centralize.
So you'll have to find a way to fit that in within the right of way with a kind of place for people to pull off to the edge of the road and just grab it.
And.
You wanna go sign there too, so that'll be fine, nice sign.
And the other thing, it's, it's, it's never too early to start the discussion on, you ought to go see Leah for addresses.
Yep, yep.
And road name and all that, and start getting that in the works.
And the Jackson's the lake's way, it's my daughter's name, so.
Are you gonna have to?
As long as it isn't another one.
Are you gonna have to do anything to Jackson Row?
Excuse me? Am I gonna have to do anything to?
Is, is it kind of dead end now? The, the dead end's there, and then it goes.
Yeah, sorry.
Wide enough, like, in a real?
Yeah, of course, yeah. The only thing, the only thing that we need to do is just extend the pavement down, um. So like, uh, I'm not positive the pavement ends right at where my property line begins, um, but I know that our property line, um, does allow us to bring that pavement all the way to the end of our stuff, and that's something we check before we purchase.
You mentioned bringing utilities down that way, and you have to start.
Yeah, they stopped right at my parents' house.
So you just do paper that when you get done?
Exactly, yeah, yep. So, we're already starting the main gas line down, so, preparation for this.
Have you got your parents' approval, because we're gonna have a public hearing.
Yeah, 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 that's it. So, the, the, the alternative entrance, the alternative entrance was on the other side of this property, that's next to my mom, so, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, probably be doing that, because, I'm sure, actually, you've done that parcel as well too, so that could maybe build a garage down there, so.
Are we gonna bury the utilities?
Yeah, underground as much as we possibly can, for sure, yeah. Yep.
It helps, that's my, oh, I don't know, Tango Paper, they're all under that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I've been looking for underground. You start with what you got, sometimes. Actually, to answer that question a little bit further, there's a, a pole that's on the other, the opposite, the same side of the subdivision on Jackson Road that provides power to Ryan's house, uh, the neighbor that's right there. And it actually traverses right across towards Jackson, and actually implemented where, or, excuse me, maybe I have to push the house down, cause the cables were there, so when I bring utilities down the road, my goal would be to try to alleviate his overhead service. You know, part of that is, you know, getting new gas as well, and so I've been kind of working with Ryan, I'm just trying to help him out.
Have you put any of your stuff up yet?
One more time?
Have you put any application on that?
Yes, of course.
Cause that'll, that'll help with your design.
Yeah, they, they, they.
You have the map of that?
Yeah, so, yeah, like I said, we, we got the 110, maybe it would be per, uh, application of a new service.
Well, it would be similar to the house we built down on, I mean, right now.
Yeah, that'll be, this is, the house is actually a little bit smaller than what I would have posted in here. I mean, uh, you know, this is very rough. I mean, uh, the house is very rough, so. That's it. Apartment of all, twenty-five hundred square foot range. Alton and else, I hope that helps the neighborhood and. Hold on. Uh, yeah, it's pretty small, but.
Yeah.
Crazy, just crazy.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so any other questions on this proposal? Any other suggestions? This is only sketch plan stage. We're just kind of giving ideas of what we think.
So the recharge area is definitely something that we'll address.
Well, if, if you are gonna put it there, I just really want to see the design, that kind of be.
And, and they're close to the limits.
All right, after you're there, Alex, do you have any questions for us? Look forward to seeing you again sometime.
Next meeting. I hope.
Talk to him. He's the one that controls the button here on that. All right, have we exhausted our, I have exhausted the written agenda. Have we exhausted everything you have for us, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, one more thing I want to point out to the board. We were given, I think there's three sets of minutes here to work on for this particular meeting, but basically the secretary is not here. I have to table that. So we'll need to look at them and bring them for the next meeting.
Yes.
Which will be on February, I'm gonna go with the twenty-eighth, right? Yes.
Is there an agenda building for the twenty-eighth meeting?
Yeah, um, we already, I would expect that we're gonna have Biochar on there. Um, uh, given what happened at the special meeting, uh, we had some advancement there. Uh, Chris is indicating he might be in for his uh, preliminary. Um, and, and I think that's all I know of so far. There are a bunch of ones out there that are tabled. I, we should have um, um, All Town Fresh Convenience there on Route Nine. They're just waiting for DT.
Well, to let you guys know, isn't one of those done. It's connected. The All Town?
Yeah.
They're, they're pretty neat. It's gonna fit in down here to, at the old.
No, it's gonna be a definite upgrade from what's there now.
It should be a rail, train, and food. You have to be down.
Right.
Right. Just one more thing for the board to, to point out that you also received your ethics disclosure statements that need to be filled out and turned in, I believe, by your first. So.
You, you have some more work. You have some other questions for you. Absolutely, and I missed, missed my opportunity. I, I guess my question would be, what, what's your feelings on this particular subdivision that I'm applying for? Is it, do you like it? Is it brought to you?
Location's good, design's good. I don't know that I can hear anything from the board that was outstanding as far as, other than that stormwater thing.
Right, yes, but, but it's more the positive overall, I mean, as far as your feelings.
Yeah.
Keep your neighbors happy. We'll have a trouble.
Um, certainly.
Certainly without.
Certainly with stormwater, you know, if you want to contact that way in front of your desire to use the cul-de-sac. If that doesn't work, you'll have to find something else on site. Uh, I gotta say, I'll speak for myself. I'm moving away from the idea of allowing um, subdivision stormwater apparatuses to be on lots. As we're running into difficulty on certain lots where homeowners tend to decide that since they own it, they can do what they want with it. Um, and it's causing problems. So it needs to be designated area.
Right. Which could potentially reduce the amount of loss you have, you know, if you did.
Unfortunately, it would be nice if everybody could just play nuts, but unfortunately, there's been some situations where some homeowners have blocked stormwater.
Yeah, that's.
Um, systems that then, and they come back and have changes made.
Well, they're, they're altering it. They're all.
They're, they're literally putting swimming pools in the middle of the drainage site. So, and, and making sure the water doesn't run into the pool by damming it up. Anyway, those things, those things to keep in mind, okay? I said, uh, can I motion adjourn?
Can I, can I just make a, a comment first, John?
Hold on, hold on.
Just real quick, um, I was going through the Biochar plans and such. And Jim confirmed for me just before the meeting that uh, we haven't gotten like a full site plan. Is that correct, Jim?
Well, we have the site plan dated October twenty-ninth.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not a site plan of the kind that we've typically gotten that shows um, lighting plans, utility plans and the like.
No.
In other words, it doesn't address any of the, the staff deficiencies that were noted back in the summer.
Yes, I agree.
So I would assume, I would assume that, you know, if we were gonna entertain a conversation with them again in February, they ought to be providing us with a full set of plans.
Well, and I actually, I, I actually noted that, that there was a comment, something about sewer or whatever, and it was said that hadn't even been designed yet. Which made me a little uncomfortable. So I'm on board with you with that, Anna.
I was really surprised. I would, I was sure we had it, but then I couldn't find it. Um, and the other thing we can discuss is more at the next meeting is that I'm, I am not convinced that we don't need a consultant for some uh, input on this project. Even uh, New York D. C. hired a consultant because of its unfamiliarity with, with bio solids and this kind of process. And, you know, I think we can count on the D. C. for some matters, but I don't think we can count on them for everything. Uh, and the staff notes in particular on this project back in the summer raised a number of issues of a technical nature that I think an outside biomass expert would be very helpful on.
Yeah, I, I have to say I'm concerned with some, some of the technical stuff when the answers seem to be, well, there actually hasn't been one of these yet, but this is what we think. So I don't know. I, I enjoyed or appreciated the D. C. meeting that we had. Um, I think that was actually helpful. But yeah, I, I, I guess I can understand that concern.
We can discuss it more at the next meeting for this project. It just, I'd like to raise it because I know we talked about a scope of work for a consultant back in December. And uh, we're kind of holding on that for now, I guess.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with you and especially in the, the point, the comment that struck me from that special meeting was some of your questions. There was one of mine about who do we, what other neighboring communities do we get involved? And the answer from D. C. was the public will have thirty days to comment. And I just, I don't know exactly, I don't know what to expect from that. So if we don't, if we don't ask the questions now, I don't know if they'll, you know, if, if we'll get that, the correct review, I guess.
And the D. C. was fairly forthcoming in letting us know that, you know, they're, they're gonna abide by their permitting process. It's not the equivalent or replacement for the seeker process. So we're still stuck with it.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I guess my concern is, like I said, that, that, that comment that came along in one of the notes that passed back and forth that, that they had designed the sewer hookup. And then I started going back to my notes and I realized that this is starting to look, it, or still looking very much a lot like a sketch plan. It's just not seeing a lot of detail that we normally see. Um, and, and even just a small project, and this is a relatively large undertaking, so.
No, I guess we gotta let them know.
So I, I mean, did, did somebody want to make a motion or suggestion that we hire?
I thought we did that back in December. But Jim, you were gonna put together a scope of work and.
Okay.
Was, did, did we not again? We don't have minutes for that meeting, which puts us in something of.
No, that, 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 you are correct. That was a discussion. Um, and then, and then what evolved was, you know, I made the suggestion, well, would it be better for D. C. to maybe take over lead agency in the, and we relinquish it? Um, then that evolved into, well, let's have a discussion. I, I passed that by, um, what's her name? Uh, D. C. Mary Beth?
Beth McGee.
Beth McGee. And, you know, she seemed somewhat reluctant to do that. And that's when she offered to make the staff available. And from that is why we had the special meeting. Yeah, so. But if I'm not mistaken, Jim, aren't we going to have to, we would have to, the, we'd have to get the applicant to agree to put money into an escrow. That's correct. Right?
I, I thought they had agreed to that in December.
Yes, and I, I think they did do that. I, I agree with that. Um, I, I, I just, my, my hesitancy, you know, I, I've gotta try and formulate a scope of services here. And there's a problem with this project is trying to sound intelligent about what you asked for. You know, cause I don't know that much about it. I'm just gonna be frank with you. I, I know a little bit about air emissions and, and solid waste, but, you know, um, you know, getting a, getting an R, RFP together, a scope of services, that's, I mean, I'll, I'll do my best.
Uh, Jim, the D. C., the D. C. indicated that they hired someone and they press, so they may know of a pool of biomass experts that they could recommend.
And I, I think it would be important to note that the, the lead of the applicant, I'm not sure exactly where his position is with Sarah Toot and Biochar, seemed very adamant when we were talking about scope, that he wanted to be sure that he understood that we were looking at the health aspects of CO2 emissions.
I don't think that's all that.
Very specific what he was okay with. So I don't know what that says personally.
I think that um, this, in the staff notes on this project, there were a number of other issues that were raised having to do with handling and the composition of the material, both the incoming and outgoing. And what kind of safety measures they're going to be on site to handle incidents. You know, for example, containment of spills, um, ensuring safety throughout each phase of material handling and processing. And also storage and handling of sulfuric acid. There's gonna be a five thousand gallon tank on site.
Yeah.
Um, so there's a lot of weird stuff that's going on at this plant and hopefully it all works. But I would think if we did as D. C. and look at a biomass expert, and Beth may be able to suggest some, that that might be with the staff notes, a good place to start.
All right. I'll give it a try.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's, it's gotta be done. It's just, I, you know, I want to make sure we get an effective, you know, uh, informative third party here. Um, so, but. I think all, all you can do is the best that, that we can do. I mean, look, we're guinea pigs in this thing too, right? Well, I, I, I just want to make sure I, I get you as a board member the information you need and. It's just, it's just, um, I, 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 I want to make sure I, I have a, a, a formalized way of doing that and, and make sure we get this right. So that, that's what I, I want to make sure I do.
Would you like the board members to send you, the interested board members, to send you a list of things that there that they maybe would, would like to hear from an environmental?
Yeah, any, any kind of feedback you can give me as to what your.
That doesn't mean that has to be the scope of work, but at least go give you an idea.
Yeah, it would, it would frame it in a little better. Um, yeah, if you have, you know.
Mentioned just now.
You know, some thoughts as to your, what your questions are that you'd like to see addressed. Cause to me, there's two main facets to this that are remaining open. And that is the air emissions to some extent. I think we got a lot of ground covered there with D. C., but there's probably some more questions. And then the, the solid waste. You know, the, the, the biofuel that's going into this.
Okay.
Those seem to be the two main facets of a environmental assessment.
Does that sink worth of line?
And.
Yeah, I think, I think that there's also um, questions about the nature and volume. It was to be determined on their application of processed waste. It was to be produced and taken from the facility to a landfill, which again raises questions about waste containers that might be maintained on the site. And how are they gonna be handled? I mean, this, this operation isn't that simple. And I think the other question had to do with um, stacks. And they may, it may be because we do not have full site plans, that we don't have the detail on things like the uh, emission stacks. And we don't have uh, any detail on, on how the uh, the silos are being used. Um, so it's um, it's basically overall, how does this thing work? And, and where can it go wrong? What kinds of stuff will be emitted, uh, into the air, on the ground? What kind of injury might people suffer if they're employed there? You know, do they have every, do they have their um, ducks in a row? But anyway, I can, I can give you what I have from the staff notes. I, I certainly not an expert on this either, but whoever did the staff notes seemed to be pretty um, pretty detail oriented.
Well, that would be me.
You did a good job, Jim.
Thank you.
You did. It was real.
Take a look. Well.
Look back.
Maybe I, I gotta go back, but maybe I go back to my own notes and that's a basis for a RFP.
I think it's a really good start.
That's a, that's a thought.
And uh, Jim, you did a good job with that. It was very impressive.
Well, thank you. All right.
So with that, have we exhausted our agenda then this evening? Do I have one more question?
Sure. The, the mobile home part, or the mobile home place that we put up here, I moved that in. Did, did we put a limit on how many mobile homes he could have yet? Like seven or five or something? Oh, he's, he's, he's pulling right, like, right in the middle and they're like, maybe three feet apart. Uh, no. If, if you go by there, take a look. I think that's something that.
Seven apart.
Yeah, and he has not put their water service in there yet.
Yeah, you have a mobile home's three feet apart.
Yeah, well, he's done there. It's um, it looks pretty close to me and I don't think, I don't think we approved it like that.
Is that something that Matt could maybe, I know he's got lots of other stuff, but I understand that road enforcement officer is.
Under the weather.
Disposed at the moment, shawty?
Yeah, so just saying this is kind of like a priority.
Yeah.
You know, cause it's, they are pretty, it's, it's really close.
Yep.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, there has to be separations.
Okay.
Okay.
Even there, I didn't make sure he puts that water line in.
I'll say it.
I've got a motion to second adjourn on the paper. Say hi.
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 Congratulations, John. Well done. Yeah, thanks.
Good night, everybody, online. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Good night. Well done.